It is 6:59 a.m. and I'd like to call the board meeting to order of the Oaks Public School District. Let's start by saying I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It is Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. It is now 7:00 a.m. and we are in the Oaks Public School District Conference Room. And we are also opened by Zoom. All board members and Dr. Steinhoff, Mr. Beta, Mr. Sessell, and Dave Erland are here with us in the conference room. April Herring is running the meeting from her office. We have with us Mr. Heck, Mrs. Maroti, Mrs. Kelly. Who's Kay? Is there anyone else, April?
There is Brennan Heck, Garrett Swanson, Caleb Maroti, Kylie Knutson, Madison Taylor, and Vicky Kelly.
Okay, very good. I can't see all those on our screen, so I'm glad I asked. All right, with that, board members, the agenda was in your packet. I did send you some communication last night with something that we should consider adding to the agenda. I'm going to propose that we do add to the agenda the item Garrett Swanson request. I request a motion from a board member for that in a second, and we can vote on that, please. Nagel moves to add the Garrett Swanson request to the agenda, and I would suggest we place it as Item B under Action Items. Is there a second? Rosendahl seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda? I did notice under Second Reading of Policies, one says ACAA, but what was in the packet was AACA, and it's a second reading, so I think that was just a typo. Anything else? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as we've amended it with the addition of Garrett Swanson's request? Rosendahl moves to approve the amended agenda. Is there a second? Thorc seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. I believe we've already recognized our visitors. Have we added anyone? Has anyone else joined us, April?
Nope, everyone is still the same.
Okay, thank you. With that, public communication was in your package. There were a number of thank yous. One for from the Roberts family for a plant, the death of Mrs. Roberts' mother-in-law. And a thank you from Deb Vandabentor for the OPS jacket for Christmas. All right, with that, the next item on the agenda is Action Items and the Second Reading of the 21-22 calendar. Dr. Steinhoff, were there any changes from last month or anything you'd like to highlight?
There are a few changes to the first reading of the calendar. We had our early out last Friday. And prior to that, I put out a survey to our staff to ask how professional development is going in the district. And one of the questions was whether or not our early outs of one hour are too long, just right, or too short. And we were almost tied between just right and too short. And so I polled the staff on Friday and said, should we switch from 12, one-hour early outs, to eight, 1.5-hour early outs instead? And it was unanimous of yes, please do that. We have a little bit more time. Before, we had four days that were three hours. And then this year, we moved to 12, one hour. And so this calendar now shows only eight early outs. They are in orange, and they will be an hour and a half. And so school would get out on those dates at 2:00 p.m. But the amount of professional development time is still the same. It's just spread out differently. The rest of the calendar is identical to what you saw before. I would also call your attention, there is a bill in the legislature to allow for school-related activities to happen on the 21st and 22nd of October. Kirsten Basler is supporting that bill. That bill also reads, though, that it would still be unlawful for us to hold instructional days on those two calendar days. But there's lots of discussion from administrators on what that would look like, could look like, or if that bill would be changed and allowed for instruction days. I can tell you that the Career Tech Center does not have school on those dates, and we don't have those listed either. Can I answer any other questions on the calendar?
Any questions? If no questions, is there a motion to approve the 21-22 calendar as a second reading? With the changes that were presented and highlighted by Dr. Steinhoff this morning. Schmidt moves to approve the Second Reading of 21-22 calendar. Is there a second? Nagel seconds. Any discussion? Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries, and the calendar is approved. The item that we've added to the agenda is Garrett Swanson's request. I forwarded to you last night the email that I received from him. He reached out to me on Friday. He had made his, had been working with Mr. Beta and Dr. Steinhoff on seeking to complete his senior, this last semester of his senior year, primarily or exclusively through the Center for Distance Education, and was met with that he would not be able to complete his POD requirement that way because the Center for Distances does not offer that class. I sent you his correspondence. Garrett is on the call on Zoom with us today. And I think at this point, I'd just like to ask him to be patient, and we'll ask him questions if necessary. But I did feel that because he did follow the proper chain of protocol and was advocating for it himself, I think it's only right for the board to at least consider his request and discuss it. So I think I'd like to ask Mr. Beta if you would like to share your thoughts on this. And I think I'm going to ask you if you'd come, we don't have that new microphone yet, right?
We do not.
Just step a little closer, because I think it will pick up better there. And speak slowly and as clearly as you can, so that Garrett and anyone listening can hear.
So like I said, Garrett Swanson approached me. I was towards the end of last semester with questioning if he could take all his classes online. And looking through the Center for Distance Ed, which is the option we choose, there's not a POD requirement. Why that's important is in OHS, to graduate from OHS, you need POD as a senior. That is your required class. If you go to graduation requirements for the state, that is an option. Or you could take a semester of econ, a semester of U.S. government. So there's another way to graduate, but at OHS, as a senior, you'll take POD. So I informed him that that's not an option. So therefore, you're not going to be able to do it, because our Smart Start client says you're either all here or you're all distance learning. There's not in-between where you're taking some classes here, some classes out. So he followed chain command and talked to Mr. Steinoff, same conversation. And then he replied to me, or sent me an email, Garrett will probably be able to clarify, but sometime here last week. And his question was really good, but he says, so what we talked about at the board meeting with required masks, if a student doesn't wear a mask and refuses to wear a mask, they're going to go distance learn. And so he said, so is there another option you found for seniors? I said, no. So if a senior would say that I'm not going to wear a mask, and I say, well, you're going to do distance learning, they technically would not be able to graduate from Oaks High School, because there's still not an option to take POD. So then Garrett followed chain command, went to Dr. Steinoff again, and now is it you guys? So that's the background of how it happened. Want me to dive into concerns I have, or what?
Not yet.
So Garrett did a great job, though. He was professional. All his emails and my conversations, he's done a very good job, so I do appreciate that.
So I think I would just like to ask Garrett to clarify for the board, what is your, what are your reasons for you desiring to take all of your classes by distance education in the second semester? Good morning, Garrett. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning. So the reason that I have wanted to do online this semester, so recently, I was promoted to Second Assistant Manager at Casey's down on the edge of town. And I know, like, stepping up to manager requires a lot more from me. And being like in the school building has caused an effect at work to where I am working 21 consecutive days in a row without a day off. And so I was looking to do online, so that way I can still meet the requirements at my job, but yet still also be able to do and like continue my education. So that way, I'm not stuck working X amount of days in a row without a day off and then having to basically just kind of rework myself every day over and over.
Okay, thank you. As I was reviewing, I can see the issue. Oaks Public Schools requires POD for seniors. Garrett has taken the first semester of it. And because Oaks Public School requires it, if he doesn't complete it, he cannot graduate from Oaks Public School. There may be a pathway for him to get a high school diploma from the Center for Distance Ed or somehow, but it would not be an Oaks Public Schools diploma, because we don't allow them to graduate without completing that course. I did this morning quickly, I went to, it occurred to me that we do have an early graduation policy. And I just want to read the opening, and that doesn't really apply exactly to this case. He's not asking to graduate early. But what I want to read is the first paragraph of this policy, GDAA, which was adopted in 2010. "The Board believes that with rare exception, the many benefits of a high school education cannot be fully realized in less than four years. Further, it views the entire senior year as an important period during which the student should be able to enjoy many experiences, providing academic growth and enrichment, exploration of new areas, and social growth and maturity." Let me read the second. "Only in unusual or extenuating circumstances should a student forego the opportunities available during the senior year. But for those who may have special needs or goals, or who would benefit from early graduation, this policy is established." Again, that doesn't apply exactly, but this policy was adopted by a board previous to any of us being on the board, and that was the philosophy. I think a lot of that does relate to this situation. So with that, I invite any other questions and discussion on this request.
Yes, so my question is, as it is now, you're not saying you can't, you can't do what you want to do. It just, you would, if you did what you want to do, you would have to either go to school or work every day?
Yeah, so like, it's like how it is right now. Like, I'll go to school and whatnot, like, in the building. And then I basically just go to work after school. But then the thing that I'm hoping to get from like this, or from whatever else comes from this, is that like if I was to do online, then that would allow me to step up a little more as a manager there and be able to cover more of the day shifts that we're struggling with. So that, and then I can still do like my online schooling when I'm not at work. So that way, I can still do both and like be successful in both and still get my diploma from wherever that may be.
Well, I think we have two separate issues here. One, we're telling people they can do distance learning, but not telling them that they won't be able to graduate from Oak's High School because of the requirement. So I think that's a separate issue that should have been probably checked, looked into before we put it in our plan. And then the second one is Garrett wanting to do the distance. I think they're two completely separate issues.
The, the, the plan for the mask enforcement was put in specifically for mask enforcement. This is a different reason. And I agree that that would be, you know, we would have the same issue if we had to implement that enforcement procedure. But that is not the case.
No, I get that, but I feel like it's two separate issues.
It is. You are absolutely right.
Free heart not support a kid that wants to work hard and go to school. I'm having a hard time. I understand, I don't like schools wrong. Garrett, you're credited for working as hard as you do. I don't know what it's worth we're supposed to do. Hell, quit work with your job or POD.
Let me ask you this, Garrett. If you were to work for the next, what are we, four or five months? And till the mid to late May, will, will this management opportunity still be available to you?
It would not, because we would pull someone in from another store to fill that position.
Would, do you think it would come up? You know, it seems to me that those sort of jobs, when I'm watching what's in the paper and advertised, those seem to come up quite often. Do you think that you would ever have another opportunity to get that position? Or a better one?
Potentially. I guess for me, it would have to be, obviously, like after May, graduation, whatnot. But I guess I wouldn't really, I wouldn't know if I would have the same opportunities in this place where I'd want to stay.
As I say, your long-term objective is that your goal is to stay at this point. When you graduate in May, that's what happens. You're staying at Casey's is your goal right now?
For right now, yes. Like, I kind of have a little bit of a life plan. Like, I plan to stay here in Oaks as like the manager and whatnot until I get a few things paid off. And then my eventual goal is to then transfer into corporate office thing in Iowa.
Board members, when I think back to my earlier days on the board and before, we had flex month scheduling in a more open campus. Occasionally, once or twice, maybe three times a year, someone, a student and/or their parents would come to the board and say, you know, my son or daughter has seventh hour free on this day or all days. I would like them to be excused from school at that time, so they can come home and work on the farm or go to their job. And, you know, it had to be approved by the board. That was a, you know, seemingly now, a relatively small and innocuous request. This seems like a pretty big deal to me. You know, I think there are ways that we could probably make adjustments to make this work. And then I read this early graduation, and without having spent a great deal of time thinking about it, "The Board believes that with rare exception, the many benefits of high school education cannot be fully realized in less than four years." And going on to do the rest of it. I'm not sure, Garrett, have you ever taken a class from the Center for Distance Ed before?
Not from them exclusively, but I've done like classes through Buzz, which they go through. Because like right now, I'm enrolled in online marketing. And that's on that Buzz portal that people have told me that the Distance for Education uses.
I think that's their learning platform by which they, maybe that's how you submit assignments and get your grades and some, okay. So is that the only time you've ever, that the only distance education class that you have taken?
I haven't been able to look at my transcript recently, but I would believe so.
Okay, so, so to me, this is a, you know, going from right now having a single distance education class to what would be five or six, because we would require a minimum of six. And being then completely, you know, not accountable to a teacher in our building or a staff member in our building is quite different than taking a single distance education class. So I'm not, you know, I'm not promoting or, or speaking against. I'm just, I'm concerned about whether we think you could be successful in this. Do you have concerns about your ability to be successful in carrying, I assume, a 40 or 40-plus hour work week load?
Given how it went last summer, and I know like I wasn't in school in the summer, but given how last summer went with my work schedule and like home stuff, I didn't struggle too much, because most of my stuff was like during the day type of shifts. And so I would come home and I would be able to do what I needed to get done. So I don't think that if I were to do like Distance Ed, that it would be a problem, because I would have that extra amount of time, however long it may be during a day, to complete that schoolwork.
Board members, questions, comments?
With the class that's in question, when is that offered at Oaks High School?
I don't know.
The POD class, is that an everyday class, a three-day-a-week class? Four days, or day-to-day series, or is morning or afternoon offered?
His request really has nothing to do with the restart plan.
No.
Well, his request doesn't necessarily. But the two, you know, when he met Mr. Beta and I, and the two things that neither Mr. Beta and I have the control to be able to change are the policy on graduation, which we talked about. And then on page 12 of the restart plan, it talks about whether you're online or virtual only, or whether you were face-to-face. And so, you know, we don't offer the virtual only, other than, I mean, we did, we are now during the pandemic, which is a requirement of us as a school district in North Dakota to have a restart plan and also provide virtual learning. Anyway, in that, in page 12, I don't know if I can pull it up. It states that you have to take six classes and it states that it's all virtual. So that's where the hangup would be that Mr. Beta and I don't have the control or power either to say, oh, Garrett, for you, we're going to allow you to do all of your online, with the exception of EOD face-to-face, because we don't have an online option for you. Does that make sense?
Board members, we've spent a fair amount of time on this, and I, I'm not, I don't want to rush through it, but I'm not sure you have all had enough time and information to make the decision. And I, but yet, this is the timely time to do it, given that we're so early in the semester. If you don't want to pursue this at all, let's just move on. If you want to have more information, I would propose that Garrett and Mr. Beta create some sort of a plan that we can look at and then maybe meet in a quick special Zoom meeting, and maybe we'll have that other little topic that wasn't ready for today. You know, we have to have lots of meetings. And you have one more question. Is he expecting the district to pay for his distance very quickly? So he can go and have full plan of learning? Garrett, did you hear that question? And Director Nagel asked if you would be expecting us to pay the tuition for your distance learning credits?
I suppose that could be something that I chat with you guys about. But in the event that you guys wouldn't, I would be more than fine with having to pay for it myself.
And I think we would have to explore, you know, what are, what are our legal obligations in that regard? And maybe work out a negotiated compromise. If we're going to go that direction, and that doesn't mean we're going to. But I think we, we may need more information, and we should try to get it in a timely manner to make this decision and make it the best we can. Does that seem reasonable, Garrett?
Sure.
All right. Then thank you for being here this morning. And we will move on to the next item. Thank you. Next item is the Restart Plan Review. There was nothing in our packet, so are there no specific recommendations that are needed today?
The area of the Restart Plan Review that I think that you should look at is, it states in there that we will ticket for activities, and it states in all colors. So now our capacity in the South Gym is 600, and then the North Gym is 550 or 60, somewhere in there. I'm not, I'm not confident, nor is Brennan, that it's necessary for us to ticket any longer, but we're ticketing until you take the verbiage out of our restart plan. So I think that's something that you could look at. Like, for example, last night, we handed out so many tickets to the girls, and then there were 150 tickets at Will Hall, basically. And I, we didn't get anywhere close to that, Mr. Beta, did we? We were going to post ticket people all up around. So that's the only, that's the only change I can think of. You know, it also states in here about the different colors of masking. And we've had lots of questions about masking, and it says, well, we're in yellow now. Why are we still masking? Well, there's still a statewide mandate to have masks based on the health officer's executive order that is approved by Governor Bergman. However, if that gets lifted, and it's set to expire on January 18th unless it's renewed, if that gets lifted, and the way our language would state now, we're in yellow. So masking would not be required any longer at Oaks Public Schools, which is what we told them we would do, you know, before with the colors. So just a heads up on that, that if people are asking about why we're still masking, it's because there's still a statewide mask mandate.
Since we're talking about restart, and if we, if the mandate comes up and everything is left as it is in yellow, I'd like the board to think about the way the contract tracing is working now. Do we, as a school, want to actively be keeping kids at home? And it's in our power not to, or how it's administered?
What do you mean that it's in our power?
Well, I guess a lot of people come up to me and ask, why is the school using resources to keep kids out of school by doing all the closed companies? And I don't have a good answer for that either, because I struggle with it myself. Why we have all these kids at home that are never getting sick? And I don't know what people around town at their businesses, if it happens like that. I mean, I'm not in that environment, so I don't know for sure. But it seems like the majority of the quarantines that I know of in the county are always kids. I couldn't be wrong.
Well, there was a stretch in there where the state wasn't doing contact tracing, because they didn't have resources. So that was a lot of it.
And are they, are they back to doing that now? Or is this the school doing that?
They are. No, I think they're back to. The county was still doing it, the state had.
So if we, if, if the mask man, the statewide mandate is lifted and we are in yellow, our, our plan says facial coverings are highly encouraged and required in certain places. Would there be any reason why we wouldn't require them in areas where six feet of distancing cannot or is not being maintained, other than the activities and things that we already are not utilizing, requiring masks? And then, you know, if you're in a large classroom that has six people and you can spread out, distancing isn't required in masks, or distancing is required, but masks are not. If you are in a classroom where you cannot distance, then masks would be required. If you are in a classroom where you cannot distance, then masks would be required. And that way, we're, we're still, um, we're controlling the close contact situation. And that, I think that's where we would, that's.
Where it is. I didn't know if that's where it was now.
That's, uh, what it looks like.
Don't know, it's masking at all times, isn't it?
Because of the statewide mandate, even though we're.
It's all times. And we had a great week last week in terms of not sending kids home due to close contacts. Um, and we had a little incident in the, in the breakfast, uh, situation, but aside that, we did not have it. So we, we really had the best week in a long time of not sending kids home and really didn't have to worry about close contacting at all, because there weren't areas where we had kids that weren't, uh, yeah, unmapped.
So I had read and shared with you, um, from newsdakota.com, uh, I don't know, two, three, four weeks ago, that Valley City Public Schools had worked with their public health, and they had reached an agreement that we're, we are not seeing close contacts result, at mealtime result in, um, positive cases, I think, if I remember right. And so they had agreed with their local public health that they were no longer going to identify close contacts for mealtime. Um, is, are, are there some areas like that that we can maybe wiggle with the, the public health and say, you know, let, let's take a look at what others are doing and see if we can implement some of those, um, additional considerations?
We can ask. I've not talked to him about that. That, that could be a question we could ask.
Well, whatever we decide to do.
Yes.
Thank you.
Because our plan states that we will.
Okay, good.
So we should.
All right, so at this time, um, what, what you'd really like to see is a change to the language regarding ticketing.
I think that's, yes.
And I suggest that, you know, given that this could be fluid and the, the guidelines, the attendance guidelines could change, that we give some administrative discretion. And for example, if we're not hosting a bell, but we're hosting regional wrestling, maybe we, we ticket uh, events at which we anticipate that, uh, we may exceed an allowable capacity, rather than having people making tickets for a game where a hundred people will show up. Um, so we're on page, what, ten?
Eliminate ticketing, for the most part, yellow one hundred. Once you get well at it, we're back. If we get to that orange again, that's twenty-five percent, you're gonna.
Then we'd have smaller attendance.
I think you're right. When you talk about a regional tournament, that's not a normal game.
Well, and we may be under different guidelines if it's a regional tournament. We may, we may not.
Yeah.
The high school activities may tell us if you are going to ticket. I don't know. So propose some language.
I think she's got there. Ticket system will be issued when capacity issues may be a concern.
That would also, well, when we're in blue, I think you're gonna use that same.
Well, I don't think we need it. That's normal.
Uh, green. That, because that's blue and green together, I guess. And we probably don't need it there.
April, the, uh, the comment here is just remove ticketing in the blue. Sorry.
I guess administrators could, you know, i- if we're hosting a regional and, and it's, and the H S A A guidelines say that there's a limit. You, you could be more restrictive without board action.
Right. I, I think if you put ticket system will be used when capacity issues may be a concern. I mean, I don't see any reason that we'll have capacity issues in the, any events unless it's something where we'd have multiple schools being here at one time.
All right, so that's the proposal, what she's showing us on the board with cross off what's in the blue-green section, uh, and amend what's in the, uh, yellow section, leaving orange and red the same.
I, I forgot too. I also talked with Kaylin about concessions, and her preference is that we continue to not have concessions as long as there's a mask mandate. She said if the mask mandate is lifted, she believes that we can be offering concessions.
I'd like to, I'm fine with that. I'd like to suggest that we make that part of our communication with our visiting teams and the public that says there's not going to be concessions. And if they are welcome to bring their own beverages and a sandwich in, that, that'd be acceptable. You know, when I go places, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get concessions or not. I don't know if I should pick something up or eat before, eat before I go. Uh, okay, so what, is there any language on here about concessions? It just says concessions may be available, concessions may be available. Okay, and that's still acceptable. Okay, we got a lot more ground to cover, so let's, uh, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to approve those changes to the restart plan?
This is disallowed ticketing, yes.
Yes, disallowed ticketing.
That's a motion? Bill Schmitz moves to make those changes to the restart plan related to ticketing. Is there a second? Nagel seconds. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries, and the plan, it changes to the plan are approved. All right, I'm gonna try to be as efficient as I can on the, um, policy. I'd like to take D D B E first by itself. This is a first reading of the family's first coronavirus leave, which we, I believe, adopted back in June. Um, Craig or April, could you summarize what we're doing here?
Yeah. Uh, when this policy was enacted, you can see the yellow that states it was until December thirty-first, twenty-twenty. Uh, many of my colleagues have recommended that their boards already extend this to the end of the year, which would mean that, it doesn't mean the emergency leave starts over for people. If they've used it, it just means that it would be available to those that, uh, have not utilized it yet. And I would recommend that we do this through the end of school year. So basically, if a staff member with, with, uh, contract COVID nineteen, they would need to use emergency leave, we'd have that leave available to them just as we did in the first semester. So the only change I would recommend, if you are willing to do it, is to switch the, switch it to the, I think we can switch it to the end of our calendar year.
Well, the family first act is through March the first.
March thirty-first? Oh, okay.
The tax benefit?
Yep.
Tax benefit, it goes through March, um, but lots of schools have still extended it to the end of the school year.
Now the tax benefit, you're saying, they've, they've extended the leave part.
The ability for staff to use emergency leave.
Yeah, yeah, so they can use emergency leave until the end of the school year. Um, but the federal part of it, uh, the tax relief is till March thirty-first.
Is it still reimbursed then also, that's an hour?
Except for the.
Your question though, is the emergency leave reimbursed? Yes, the emergency leave is reimbursed. It's, it's paid emergency leave up to ten days.
But I mean, as far as the funding for our, our side?
No, the funding will, will no longer be reimbursed.
Okay, because before, before you're using the CARES on the other end, that would be at the time, right?
Yes. So this, this would come out of general fund.
And I know most of our staff members that have had to leave due to COVID reasons usually utilize our telework policy. Um, so it's not like we have a lot of people that have actually taken the leave. Um, I think there's maybe, it's more of the hourly employees because they can't telework.
And yet the cost of the district is all the same, because even with telework, we need to have subs in the building. So we're, it's probably similar in terms of cost to us as a district, I believe.
So on this semester, right now, all that is are subs for the semester from now on, all on the district, or is there any other?
They'd all be, they'd be on the district. Unless, unless I'm wrong, April, we don't have any funding that's available to us to pay for subs from CARES funding from starting now, right?
Nope, it had to all be expended by December thirtieth.
You got two places that you need to change the date to, April, page three. At the very bottom there.
Oh, yep, I see that.
All right, any other questions or comments? If, if not, I'll, I'll seek a motion for, to accept the first reading of D D B E amending of the extending of the, this policy through the end of the school year, correct? Okay, is there a motion to approve this first reading? Rosendahl moves to approve the first reading of D D B E. Is there a second? Schmidt's seconds. All right, we've had some discussion. Are there any further questions, clarifications, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Now, first readings, there are a lot of them. Um, April and I went through and kind of vetted them, and we divided them, um, into those that we think should require a second reading and those that we think a second reading could be waived. And we were kind of doing this by email last evening. And so, um, does, did anybody have any questions or concerns on any of these that they wanted highlighted? Or how about if I suggest tho- those that we thought we could waive the second reading? And if anyone objects or has concerns, we'll, we'll, we'll send those off to the, the list that would take a second reading. So those that we thought may not need a second reading were B D D, compensation and expenses for board. D G says D G A A, but now on my list it says D G G A. And that is professional development. Or do I have two? Okay. Um, D H B A?
Yep, they changed that descriptor to D, to D.
Oh, I see. Oh, that's the same thing. It's D H B A and D G G A are the same policy and they're changing the code?
Yep, that is correct.
Okay, there we go.
And that's the grievance one, or?
No, that's professional development. D A B, definitions for personnel policies. Um, my notes on that one say, it says athletic director, it should really be activities. And then going back to the previous one, uh, it says somewhere advanced ed, and that has been changed to CAGIA. So anywhere where we have an advanced ed, it should now say CAGIA, we're amending, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, then skipping ahead to D D C A B R, that's a board regulation which only requires a single reading anyway, right? And that's political leave.
Correct.
D E A E, occupational safety, fairly simple adding, uh, fire extinguisher locations into the orientation. Any concerns with that? D F A A, teacher evaluation. Um, I didn't have any notes or questions on that one. Was there any concerns? Okay, licensure is D H A. D J A is substitute. D J E, bus drivers. On that one, you said we need to add some complementing documents, April?
Yep, um, accidentally deleted them, but we do have some administrative, um, regulations and then I E A A um, that go along as complementing, so I would have to update that.
Okay, D K B A is separating of Atwell employees. Yeah, I think that one was just specifying that superintendent has some responsibility instead of the district in general. D K B B granting release from, that's a board regulation. Okay, and the only change was changing the word teacher to contracted staff members, so it would extend the, uh, the, the terms of the policy to contracted staff other than teachers.
Correct.
And that's a board regulation and doesn't require a second reading. So those one, two, well, two of them are being combined, but one, two, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, I have eleven unique policies or regulations that April and I did not think would require a second reading. Anybody have concerns or questions or feel like they would like a second reading on any of those? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adopt or rather to amend those policies and regulations, and I'll read them again, uh, before we make the motion, um, and waive the second reading. Policies are B D D, D H B A, and that, and that one we would be, um, rescinding? Help me, April?
There is one coming up. It's the teacher grievance one. So it gets complicated because professional development is D G G A.
Uh-huh.
And now teacher grievance is D G A A.
Okay.
So we have to rescind D G A and replace it with D G A A.
Well, we don't, what about D H B A and D G G A?
D H B A, that's just an amendment, because there isn't another one.
What, what's the, what's D G G A?
D G G A is professional development, and we don't have one.
Okay. All right, so we're, we're approving amendments to B D D. We're adding D G G A, but is that replacing D H B A?
It's replacing D H B A, yep.
Okay, that's real long. Okay, we're also amending D A B. Board regulation D D C A, we're amending D E A E, D F A A, D H A, D J A, D J E, D K B A, and board regulation D K B B.
Bam, yep.
Can I? A S A P. Um, all right, is there a motion, uh, to take those policy actions that I just described? And we're waiving the second reading on all of those. Thank you. Robert Thorpe makes that motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Good. Rosendahl seconds. Now, any discussion or any concerns that there's something in there that we should pull out for a second reading? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries. So on your list of first readings, that leaves A C D B, that's a video surveillance policy. D B A C, recruiting. D B D, classified and staff intent to rehire. D C B, definition of work week. D K B B, contracted staff. And D G A A, teacher grievance procedure. So the, these, I'm seeking a motion to adopt a first reading, and they would be revisited on a second reading.
Yes.
Nagel moves to approve the first reading of those policies, is there a second?
Second.
Schmidt's seconds. Any questions or discussion on any of those at this time and again, we'll look at them again next time?
The grievance is. You get a whole chance to look at that one. Very close, I mean, there are not much changes from the one that we.
No, what I what I tell you is that, you know, we have a specific grievance. Procedure that's listed in the negotiated agreement for grievance to the negotiated agreement, so like the one that we're going through, where I have been going through. Is following that grievance, this is grievance and policy. Which would be the way that it would be followed and it's a grievance. That's not related to the negotiated agreement. Yep.
Okay, and April, did you say what's related to the grievance procedure, is there something we need to resent?
No, um, there's an exhibit, so it's a grievance form that they write out, but we've never, it's never been used, so we've never adopted it. Um, most grievances are usually in a letter or email, a written form by the person submitting it, so that's why we deleted the exhibit on there.
Oh, so that's that's part of the the amendment, that's what part of what we're amending is to delete, okay. All right, any other questions or comments about the policies that we're moving for a second to to adopt a first reading today? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries. For second readings, again, um, I the the in your on your agenda, one of the policies for second reading is ACA. And what I, one thing I liked is that April put these on reading in your your packet, so they kind of popped out, those are your second readings. Um. ACA is should have been ACA, the section 504 Rehabilitation Act. Okay, I personally, um, again, looking at policy AAA philosophy of the public schools. That's very broad and and complete language that I think we should pull out, we we adopted a first reading. I think we need to pull that out and have a more deep discussion about that at a board retreat sometime. There's a lot of stuff in there and I can't say I I disagree with any of it, but I I think it deserves more attention. So unless there's an objection, I'm going to ask that we not adopt a second reading of that today. Triple A. Hearing no objection, then we will, uh, move ahead to ACA, section 504. Um, BBC method of filling a board vacancy. GCAA grade promotion, retention and acceleration. And GCBA grading. These, we had first readings last month and I'm seeking a motion for a second reading and final approval. Any questions or comments or? Or anyone have any other concerns about pulling anything out there? If not, is there a motion to approve those four policies for second reading and final approval?
I'll make a motion.
Rosendahl moves the the approval, is there a second? Nagel seconds, is there any discussion? Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. The motion carries and those four policies are adopted. Thank you. All right, uh, moving on to reports, activities director, Mr. Hack, wake up. Uh, microphone?
Yep, oh, there I am, I was muted. Good morning. Um, so I I sent out that, I guess, just in the interest of time, I won't go through all of them. Um, but hitting on a couple of the the ones up top there, um, relating to speech and state music. Um, as of now, an email went out, uh, about a week and a half ago that those are, those are still as of now delayed. Um, they are working in in the fine arts, uh, subcommittees at the state level to see if they can find a solution. Uh, but as of now, there is, there is no specific date or time set for those that they would. Uh, be kind of kicking off again, uh, speech through C stand does have a proposed start date of February 8th. But the activity association has not, uh, approved that date yet, so that that is just a proposed date still as of now. Um, yeah, I talked to Colt as well, uh, and it sounded like band and choir is going quite well. They did organize a toy drive that concluded at the end of December, uh, and they donated those items to the Kettish House. Uh, for for kids in need over the holiday break there. Archery, Dr. Steinhoff and I, uh, had met with Mr. Sager to kind of try to figure out a plan for that. Um, and and really the holdup in archery right now is that, uh, the national standards are are quite restrictive, so. Um, he's going to do some brainstorming and see if we can find a solution that will allow us to kind of get back to archery a little bit. Um, unfortunately, yes, yeah.
Um. The national standards, are those just for meets? I mean, do we have any flexibility with regard to holding our own practices?
So th- they are, I believe, for all all levels, if it's practice or meets. Um, the the issue now is that there has to be a mandatory six foot distance between the targets and only one shooter per target. Um, in talking with Mr. Sager, typically the way practices were run is that he would have maybe two or three shooters per target. Um, just to kind of expedite the process a little bit, whereas now, um, they are limiting to only one, one person per target. Um, so he, it's it's a pretty substantial slowdown as far as that goes, uh, in the archery room there, so. Um, you know, we're, we were talking a little bit of trying to find, uh, some sort of solution to get us back going with that a little bit. Um, and and it sounds like most of the meets this year are going to be virtual as well, so they will, they will do their shooting and then submit the scores. Uh, via website there for like the state tournament or national tournament or things like that, so. Um, he's, he's working on a solution to see if there's, there's a possibility that we could, um, find some sort of creative way to kind of get going with that again.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, and you know, as well, then we've got both the the girls and boys varsity basketball as well as the junior high basketball going right now, so the the junior high girls are kind of at the end of the season. And the junior high boys are just at the start of their season. Um, and then both of the the varsity squads are are kind of hitting the the meat of their season here where. Uh, they're going to be entering weeks with two to three games per week here just to to try to get in. You know, games that were previously scheduled and and we had to reschedule them, so. Um, that's, that's kind of where that's at, uh, and then regional wrestling dual tournament was brought up earlier. Um, we're still waiting on the exact date for that, um, the activity association has proposed either the 23rd or the 30th. For the regional dual tournament, which is held in Oaks. Um, so I'm I'm really hoping that they they make the decision on which one of those two dates it's going to be so that we can kind of get planning. Rolling for that because it it's going to be a pretty quick turnaround once they they give us the exact date for that. So, um, you know, we'll, we'll, I guess, kind of as always with everything else, make it work on short notice, so. Um, you know, when whenever that comes up, we'll, we'll get things going for there, so. Um, that's kind of what's happening there and then the attendance protocols have already been mentioned a little bit too, but. Our capacities for the north gym are 558 and the south gym is 672 right now, so that's, that's where we're at for total numbers.
I reached out to Mr. Hack yesterday and asked him about the upcoming elementary basketball, I didn't see anything on the schedule. That didn't want to wait too long and then also not have anything planned, so. Bring guys up to speed, he said he would. Be working on it and I told him even if some of the other towns didn't want to do it, I think always wants to, assuming, I didn't want to speak for you guys, but. Yeah, that's what I do.
Yeah, have practices and many games and, you know, camps or inner squad scrimmages, just get the kids doing something. And and what, how did, the girls' elementary season did not happen in the fall? Or boy, I can't remember.
Mr. X got that answer.
Yep, yep, we we pushed the elementary girls' season to the spring. Um, the issue that we had there is it was us and only two other communities that were holding elementary girls' basketball in the fall. Um, the other ones had had chose to not have their seasons. Um, so we we pushed it to the the spring to align with a couple of other towns in our area that hold elementary girls' basketball in the spring already. So we're just going to run both the elementary girls and boys concurrently in the spring here.
On that same note, what's the status of elementary wrestling?
Uh, that's, that's a great question too, I will have to check with Corey, typically what he's done is kind of, you know, kick that off right after his his varsity season has concluded. Um, so I will, I will check with him to see if he's, he's got a plan as far as that goes as well.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Hack? Hearing none, uh, and being respectful of Sheila's desire to leave by 8:15, if you don't mind, I'd like to move the board member report on choice ready training. Up, uh, before we have the principal's report, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on it, I just want to make sure that all of you have done your homework. Especially Sheila, because I just want her to sneak out and. So as I had emailed to all of you, I asked you to watch, uh, uh, at least one of the choice ready ready trainings that were available online. Um, I watched the, um, four-year rolling plan and the, a couple of things I learned that I wanted to share. Is that the state does not require a four-year rolling plan for graduation, but. To be considered choice ready, a student must have completed a four-year rolling plan. For each year and there are various formats where it can be found and, uh, Mrs. Brecker. Uh, shared with us a choice ready document that we use here in our school. That's what I learned that I wanted to share. Sheila, do you, did you watch one?
I did, I watched the workforce, many wanted to use what it was. But. Uh, one of them, work keys or workplace can replace the other one, but it doesn't go vice versa and I forget which way that is now.
The work, yeah, the work keys can can be a replacement of the ACT score of a 24, but you can't use. Can't be vice versa to that.
Okay. All right, any, anything else that you wanted to highlight? Okay, anybody else have something to share? Brian's looking at his phone and asks to put some notes on there.
No, I was just trying to remember what the name was.
Well, I did the same for your plan before you sent out your email, I never got the link to work where I could watch it. I had printed one out and I showed it to Lily, freshman. She said she had seen something like that before, but did not fill it out. Just the ear got cut off last year, so. Probably behind on doing that in our school, so.
Okay, so I, that's something too that I noticed, especially with the four-year rolling plan, I always knew there should be one, but I never really saw it. That doesn't mean that my kids never saw it or it was never done, but that's something I think. Maybe it would be nice that parents see at a, um, parent teacher conference or a a conference with kids and staff, counselor. Principal, whatever. Bill, did you get a chance to look at one while you were on the beach?
I looked at it, I was just straight up asking, are we using that part? Where do we have this? I haven't really talked about this in the two and a half years I've been at work, I'm there, but we have.
The cho- the whole choice ready framework?
I'll be honest with you, I haven't heard much about it.
Okay, that's why I'm bringing it up, good.
Because I'll say this, when I look at this, I think sometimes we get lost, fours for the trees. They put all these different areas there, and you're worried about checking boxes versus actually learning, and that does concern me, I don't know if that is true or wrong way. Because they have the different boxes, you're supposed to have two from this and four from here. To me, it's like, where are we focused, we're more worried about checking boxes or actually? I'm I'm asking that in our district, what do you feel?
This boxes are checked, is Jody on the present, Craig? Question? I, I do not see her.
Jody is not on.
Did you want to move your really great answer to the question?
Good observation, I appreciate it.
Yeah, mine was similar to that, I mean, mine was just on understanding the framework of the choice ready program, which again, I feel said. Um, very limited. For me, as far as being exposed to it, and I wonder how many of the students and parents really understand what it is or how it works either, so. So for me, that was probably the biggest thing is. Is there anybody or is everybody really aware of this and how it works? I guess the other thing was they said in the thing was that it's been in place for five years. And it's only been valued with one of those years, so it's like, it's been out there, but it really hasn't been. Looked at that much, so I guess.
Many schools are proficient as their family. While I look at the first testing, making.
I guess a real challenge getting it implemented and, yeah.
Okay, again, this is just, uh, one little step in our march towards trying to do what the board's supposed to do, define. What is success in student achievement and this was is one of the benchmarks. That is available at used to some extent, so again, I think we'll dive dive deeper into this at a board retreat sometime in the future. Okay, thank you, and now we'll go back to principals' reports. And I I think I am, because when I listened from Zoom, I had a hard time hearing when you were sitting back there, so I think if you come up near Dr. Steinhoff, that would be. Uh, better for everyone to hear, thank you.
Hi, did you get your questions for me?
Oh.
I was upstairs and you were talking about it and I'm just wondering if I can help.
Oh, Mrs. Brecker has come in, um, I I think we've kind of completed that agenda, but if anyone has a quick question for Mrs. Brecker. Uh, we may want a more detailed, um, presentation sometime about. Graduation requirements and a portrait of graduate, well, you know, again, what, how we define success for students at Oak's Public School.
Well, I, what I wanted to tell you when I was listening is. In the eighth grade, you know, normally under normal circumstances in the normal year, you would have a. An interview with the kid and talk to him about their four-year plan, which is a. Four-year rolling plan, but just to, you know, map out for them individually and talk to them about. What their goals and dreams are and how it fits into their whole schooling. So that would happen in the eighth grade and then going into ninth grade, they'd be nine through 12, they'd be a little more. Visual about what happens and then I work with Mr. Beta and we. Throw in my breath like. And then we work together in educating the kids in what classes are offered and what, um, and then I talk to him about. Okay, you're interested in this, this is what this requires and and he does the same thing on a regular basis, so. You know, any time, he was talking about how is it implemented? It's implemented all the time, really.
But you're talking about specifically, I think, about the four-year rolling plan and we we were studying the entire choice ready framework, which. Is much broader than that, um, with regard to the the four-year rolling plan. Um, and I guess the choice ready framework, you you were a counselor for how many years, Julie, this is your second year with us?
Right, um, I was informant for 14 years and I worked for career to get, uh. Career resource ready, uh, working with all the counselors for seven years out of Waukesha Science. And I did training with them on career planning.
Okay, and so from your perspective, with the four-year rolling plan and other choice ready elements. To what extent do you think? Parents should or could be involved or at least aware of those plans?
Knowing the choice ready requirements, um, just, yes, it is a checklist, but at the same time, just those things that are important. Also sending a list to parents in the eighth grade and and reinforcing in the ninth grade that. This is kind of the overall picture. And you can be working on this, this, this with guiding your child, um. On making that career decision because it's a big, it's big decisions coming up, so. Um, I just think being transparent with parents and keeping them in the loop like along the way, I think that helps. Um. You know, it's been hard this year, but. We tried the best we can, it's all on paper, they're all in email and that's not as personal as I would like it, but.
Okay, all right, any other questions or, thank you for running down.
Yeah. I know it's confusing because there's this requirement, that requirement, and how do we make that implement? And like you said, how do we make it work for the kid? And I think that's our goal. How do they make that decision, you know, I really need advanced math or maybe I don't, you know? Um. And Mr. Beta does that all the time too and discussing the classes.
All right, thank you for running down.
Hey, all right, anytime you have questions, drop an email or or call, that'd be great.
Okay, so, all right. Mrs. Sal.
See you, thank you.
Okay, um, uh, Mr. Steinhoff, I believe, including in your packet of data from our testing.
Let's present, so you can see.
There we go, perfect.
Data from our testing and, um, you can see that the, there was a lot of growth between our fall start that we took right away when we came back. We really wanted to get a picture of where they were at and where we were at in December. So that was our goal, that we want that to happen, and our teachers are working hard at that. Another piece of data, I don't know if, I'm not sending this to you or not, I didn't tell them exactly, was there is, for Renaissance, they can provide us with growth data based on, you know, some big algorithm that they have that looks at the testing. And it's not just looking at the score, it's looking at a child, so it's apples to apples. So a child that's in fourth grade that has scored a certain score on their test, and then what they score on the second test, they can compare those kids with how many ever kids across the nation that are taking this test. So it's normed for all of those, so it's a huge pool of data and how that kid scores. And with that algorithm, they can tell you the growth that that child made, if they made, the amount of growth that they should have been expected to make. So it's not comparing all fourth graders with all fourth graders. It's a fourth grader at a certain score and then how they score on that second test. So the algorithm is pretty steady. And like I said, they have a huge pool with Renaissance with all the kids in order to norm the test. So the data is pretty good that we get from them. So the growth that we had for the kids, I can send this to you if you want, but we had as high as per math, 93% of the kids made the growth that they were expected to make above or above that. I mean, we had huge growth in some of those grades. I think if you see in the fifth graders in math, they, 97% of the kids scored proficient. That's, that's just an amazing number, so that means that they scored above the 40% cap. And their growth, 71% of the kids made the proficient growth that they needed to make. So it being here at school definitely makes a difference for our kids.
So you're saying that this is comparing against all other students across the country, many of whom are not at school?
Okay, so that's kind of data, that normative data is probably already in place, you know?
Historical.
Right, it's historical. So looking at, like I said, there's a huge algorithm, the Renaissance show, I've seen it before in some of their presentations, but, you know, on the average, the growth that they need to make in order to reach their goals or where they need to be. So again, like it's taking a child in fifth grade that scores the same score. It's not taking fifth grader that's, they're all across the board. So the, you know, the chances of a kid, it is a high, high score, so we see this a lot in high school, right? 1,400 is the max out for those kids, and that's the highest score they can get on Renaissance. So that algorithm or that growth report can tell you if the kid's at 1397 and they stay 1397, what's, what are the, what's the percentage of kids that do stay that way or do they drop? So it gives us better data than, you know, if a kid only raises by three points, well, you know, would that come out as, you think that wasn't very good growth, but it is when you compare them to their peers, so.
All right, any, any other questions? Or you have more, more? Yeah.
Okay, TLA, we started TLA tomorrow night. So there are nine teachers from Oaks that are in the TLA Academy. We're going to be gathering in here. The teachers kind of, we had a request, we agreed that all be together. So we'll be masked, we'll be distanced by the requirement of NDSU. So butt books, regal, it is operations and maintenance of the school, and then also law. Those are the classes we're working on right now. COVID, I only have six out right now. I did have two close contacts at breakfast, like Craig said, and the rest have been kids that have been home, you know, that they've been, they've gotten it, they're out because of things at home. Report cards are going out at the end of this week, and then we will be doing the Wellington Index. I'm pretty sure that you guys have probably heard about that. We're going to do that social studies on the 19th of January, and I just kind of wanted to keep it distant. So all of my kids work at this school, keep them around the index survey, so.
No, we haven't.
Oh, okay.
That's a social studies.
Nope, what it is, is it's going to, it asks the kids, it's to survey the kids as far as engagement on whether the class is hard or whether the class is easy, it's on a quadrant, or whether they like it or dislike it. So it's very basic. So let's say their math is challenging for them, so they, it might be hard, but they maybe really like it, so then, you know, they, they would place a dot in a quadrant. So it's a really quick survey for our kids to take that we can give it multiple times a year, but it gives our teachers feedback. So they won't have something specific, they won't know that Logan Sell said this about my class, but they will be able to get this data back to teachers' deal, and then, then I'll give them some feedback about their class, you know, if it's easy, hard, dislike it, dislike it, and then.
So basically two questions, two dots.
Yeah, yeah. And it's simple. Right, one that, on the quadrant, I'm sorry, but they would be like six, how many ever classes they have. So my four, five, and six would have about six dots that they would be placing. Brandon would probably have six or seven dots. They would do it for each of their teachers. And Brandon and I both took it, it's super easy to do, you know, like when I look at science and then now, okay, so do you think science is easy and hard, or easier or harder, do you, and do you like it or dislike it? So, you know, we decided that that was a place that we were not getting feedback was from our kids, and those are our main customers, right? They're the ones in the class. And Mr. Beta and I can say, okay, this teacher's doing this, and there's rigor, and there's engagement, but we only see a small snapshot where those kids are in there every day. And it's just part of our growth mindset for our teachers that, you know, it's not going to be part of our evaluation, but it gives those teachers feedback in order to improve their practice.
And you'll be doing that when?
We're doing it on the 19th, right?
And it's going to be school-wide?
Of course, well, not the one.
Okay.
Is there, we did have quarantines for breakfast?
We did. Yep, they, it pretty much ran herd on them, which I didn't even, I didn't even think about a close contact at breakfast, but the family actually reported in it. So went back and we looked at the video, and there was close, yeah, there was, yeah, there was two or three of them there at breakfast, but we've got that figured out. So as soon as they're done eating, those masks go up and at that time, you know, down. But I have Roberts write though about, you know, in those classes. So I've got Thirby and Shelby's math class, and unless they wear their masks in there, we're going to be back to close contact tracing again in those classes, because there's no way in Shelby's class that she can separate those kids out six feet. So I guess that's going to be, I mean, we're all glad that the mask is one way. I mean, I'm glad it's one way, I don't want to wear my mask either, but I'm, there is that, we're back to that same concern, but if they're not wearing their mask, we're going to be back to close contact.
Are you comfortable with our policy, the way it says masks highly encouraged and required in some places? And we will have to judge where they will be required.
Yeah, and I think we're kind of back to where we were, so like Kelly's class, she can separate, right? So her kids can take their masks off, and she can wash, and, but if they come up to the rug, she can have them put their masks on when they come up to the rug so they can work together. Because there has been positives about it, because we can work in groups, and we don't have to worry about knocking each other out. And, and that's given the teachers just one more option of things that they can do. If we go back to no, kids get to choose masks, we're going to be close contact tracing in, back in classrooms again.
Good question, thank you. Anybody else?
I sent you an email on the Wellington Index, a video that I sent to the staff, so you can watch that and get a better understanding of that, of Wellington and what it is.
Great, now, Dr. Steinhoff has given you homework. Mr. Beta?
For short, December students of the month for December, high school Ainsley Helgerson and Rhett Miller, and then junior of it Lexi Harrison, Bruce Thomas. So congratulations to those four students. Our start testing will begin on the 18th for reading. That week will be given the start test to South 12th graders. Then the following week, the 22th to the 29th, we will do the math benchmark assessment. They'll have that data when we're done and ready for you guys by the February board meeting. This is how you said the Wellington Index is coming up, and then we have a state student engagement survey also coming up. And that window is January 18th through February 19th. And that was, if you remember, back to last year, talking about how we're giving a survey to our kids on how engaged you are, but the questions that we were giving them were utterly ridiculously garbage. So they revamped that, I don't know what the questions look like, so we will find out. I think on Friday, you're supposed to get more information from the state as far as a link and then rosters and all those things, so we'll get that taken care of as well. So that's all I got for this semester for us.
Questions for Mr. Beta? Hearing none, thank you. Superintendent's report, shout out.
Yes, I have four, two 12 shout outs. First one is submitted by Brian Sire. I would like to start off by saying the month of November was rough at our house, and I was in quarantine or, for two weeks, and I took Gabby out for two weeks in that time. I really had no idea how Zoom worked. When I was with Gabby, she logged on, and I listened to Gabby's first teacher and thought, wow, that was good. And she had two more and thought, wow, I'm very impressed. After we got home, I listened to Lexis Zooms and Jamison Zooms. So I'd like to give a huge shout out from Jenny and I for involving the kids as much as you did and to make them accountable for their work. So thank you to Mr. Shaw, Mrs. Warren, Mrs. Dela White, Mr. Kramer, and Mrs. Lynch. And I had a personal conversation about, with Brian about that, and he was very pleased with how well our staff did in terms of accommodating his family. Next one, a shout out to Coach Dobitz. Thank you for caring about your players' well-being, even when it isn't football season. Two thumbs up. Shout out to the handful of representatives from our school who went against the green and wore their mask while in Aberdeen, where they weren't required. Thank you for being true leaders and following the guidance that we would expect on our old school grounds. I saw you and I appreciate you. And the fourth one is, Mr. Kramer is an excellent educator. He has done wonders for my grandson. This is his calling, and many are grateful for his skills. So congratulations to all of the two 12 shout outs. And for this month, that concludes my report, unless you have a question.
Thank you. Committee reports, curriculum committee, I guess my name's on this. We did meet, Robert wasn't able to attend, we met by Zoom here a week or so ago. I took great notes, but I didn't bring them. Ms. Dr. Steinoff was there. The one thing I did notice, you know, in your packet, there's a curriculum development, a seven-year cycle, and due to the circumstances, we're a little behind on some things. We are doing a lot, a lot of professional development, and some of the curriculum cycle has been left behind. I did notice, though, we talked about counseling is supposed to be starting this year, along with PE, health, fine arts, and foreign languages. But we only, here at Oaks Public Schools, we only do, we're only really in charge of elementary counseling, because our senior high, junior high, senior high counselor is employed by Southeast Career and Career Tech Center, and those standards have been, are adopted by the state and have been updated recently, and I think Jody's familiar with them and implementing them. Any other comments from Rager, Anna, or Brandon?
The other big takeaway was we talked about syllabus or syllabi.
Yeah.
And said that we're going to find a way to make sure that we have the syllabus available on our website, and then probably also on Schoology, so that parents, when they go look at our curriculum, whether it's a priority standards or reviews, they can also see syllabus and sort of like courses.
And I was pleased, Mrs. Beta was, is a member of the committee and was on the call, and she was, I, I felt nodding her head both as, from the perspective of a lower elementary educator as well as a parent, like, and, and Mrs. Christensen also on the call, wanted clarification as to, well, is, you know, if you have a college syllabus, it's pretty much like every single assignment, when it's due, and which chapters to read. And I think the consensus was that we're not looking for that level of detail, but just the, the priority standards to be covered in the class, what resources, if we're using a textbook, or if it's an English class, you know, here are, you know, a half a dozen novels that may be included, just, just a year at a glance, or a year, you know, not every single thing, because it should change based on the need for the class. I thought it was a good meeting.
Agreed.
Okay, if there are no questions, staffing update.
I don't think we have any staffing update. I'm pleased to report that we are fully staffed, so that is a great thing, right, Dave? Fully staffed, yes.
And we've already done the board member reports on choice-ready. So we'll move on to the, oh, portrait of a graduate is in, is in the packet along with the choice-ready training. And there's another, you know, another thing that we're using to evaluate, or hopefully evaluate our kids and their readiness for, for their future lives. So with that, in your packet, there are minutes from December 8th, December 18th, December 31st. I guess I noticed a couple of typos in the December 18th. Oddly enough, Schulick didn't have a K at the end, and Nagle was spelled wrong in a couple places, the L and the E were. Okay, other than that, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Or is there a motion to approve them as presented?
I'll make a motion, motion to approve.
Thor moves to approve the minutes of the three meetings. Is there a second? Schmidt seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Approval of the pledge report, I believe that's an every-six-month endeavor for us, April?
Yep, it's required every six months to ensure that the banks have enough money to secure our deposits.
Okay, and that report is in your packet. We have reports from Starion, First Community Credit Union, and, well, First State Bank, which is now Bank North, that was in your packet. Is there a motion to approve that pledge of assets report?
I'll make a motion.
Rosendale moves to approve, is there a second? Thor seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. The financial reports will look at the reconciliation, the balance sheet, and the revenue and expense reports together. This is last month's report, and then we'll move on to bills to be paid. So were there any questions about the reconciliation, balance sheet, or revenue and expense reports? Is there a motion to approve those three reports? Schmidt moves to approve the reconciliation, balance sheet, and revenue and expense reports. Is there a second?
Seconds.
Rosendale seconds, any discussion? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries, and those reports are approved. Approval of bills which begin on page 75 of your packet, and I don't think there was anything that came out late, so bills on 75 through 80. Is there a motion to approve the bills to be paid as presented in the packet?
Does the bus in our possession? It is, and being used. I'll make a motion to approve.
Thor moves to approve the bills as presented, is there a second? Schmidt seconds, any discussion? Anything you want to highlight, April?
Nope, nothing that comes to mind, besides, I mean, the bus was on there, but.
All right, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries, bills are approved. Anything for the good of the order, or other than the future meeting dates? Questions, comments?
And we'll be at the Southeast Region Career Technology Center, and they will be providing breakfast. And I'm going to work with Larry on how we make sure that we have Zoom. But I, I think we'll be meeting in the chef train, so.
Okay, and that would be Tuesday, February the 9th at 7:00 a.m. at Southeast Region Career Tech Center, and be on the alert for a special meeting at which we may consider the topic of, here at Swanson's request, with more detail and any, you know, any other thing that might pop off the piece of consideration. With that, I'll declare this meeting adjourned at 8:28 a.m. Thank you all for being here, and thank you, everyone. You're welcome.